Morning.
Morning.
Morning, it's Kurt Tanyan.
Morning Kurt.
Hey Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Uh, you know, living the dream. I will just have you guys on mute on my end just so I don't cause a disturbance and I'm just pay, I'm assuming pay attention and then if you need me I'll answer.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Alright.
Morning. Good, how are you? Thanks. Okay, good morning, it's 10:00 AM. Ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Almighty God, we thank you for this midsummer morning where we can gather and conduct the business in the county. We are thankful for our beautiful valley that you've created that we call home. And we always appreciate and marvel at your creation. Lord, our areas in need of rain and you supply all our needs. The farmers have planted their crops for the season and we trust that their crops will grow, that you will provide the rain and sun for a bountiful harvest. Father, this Sunday we will remember the 21 loved ones from our community that was lost, that were lost on the flight 800. We will never forget that day when we lost 16 students and five chaperones. They were sons and daughters, brothers and sisters, and mothers and fathers. All were brilliant and vibrant, which touched so many in their short span of life. We ask you to continue to comfort their family, friends, and our community as we remember their precious lives each day. Lord, this morning we'll be recognizing three employees for their dedication and work for the county. We are thankful for their service along with all our employees that work each day and serve the residents. We especially wish Wendy well in her retirement and thank her for her years of service. Bless their lives as they answer the call to serve others in assistance to their duties. We humbly pray these things in your name as we seek your will, guidance, and blessing. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, we'll convene the commissioners' public meeting at this time and ask for the approval in the midst of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Now second?
On their side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Public comment on agenda items only, anybody? Okay. Moving to service orders.
2.1, um, the Lord of Commissioners will recognize the following individuals on their service to Lycoming County. An adult probation, Jim Schreiner, 30 years.
Okay, Eric.
Jim, keep going up please.
Good morning, everyone, thank you commissioners. I thought it would only be fitting to not only recognize Jim for his 30 years of service, but to, you know, for someone that's been here for 30 years, I think we should be able to roast him a little bit as well. When I saw the commissioner's agenda the other day and saw Jim Schreiner listed under for 30 years, most people would be like, wow, what a milestone. When I saw, but for me, when I saw the time of the meeting being at 10:00 AM, I immediately knew that he would be upset by this because it's just the same time that he and his wife Jill take their 15-minute break. I noticed that Jill's not here right now, so she must be outside waiting on him. Jim, I know your time is precious, I'll do my best to get you out of here as quickly as possible so you can still have your break. Today we celebrate Jim 30 years with the county, 29 with adult probation, and the previous year, uh, prior to that with, uh, Lycoming County Prison as a correctional officer. He has handled the general caseload. We implemented our drug court program in Lycoming County in 1998, and Jim was the first officer, uh, involved in the drug court program. In 2015, he left drug court and he went back to a general caseload. He's been a firearms instructor for our office since 2005, and he's been an ALICE instructor since 2016. For those of you that don't know what an ALICE instructor is, it's like, uh, shooter in the building with all the mass shootings in the schools worldwide. Jim has been to, I believe, every school district in Lycoming County and put on this training almost, um, Jim as well as, uh, local law enforcement officers. He has been a longtime football and wrestling official in his spare time. He's married to his wife Jill who works in the district attorney's office and has three beautiful daughters. So, when I go back, I wanted to think about, what's, you know, 30 years, 27 working together, what is my most memorable story of Jim? So I, I, I think back about over 10 years ago, you know, we all know our office, we do drug testing whether it's at the defendant's homes or in our office. In this particular time, I was walking by Jim's office and he had a urine cup about this size sitting on his desk. He accidentally knocked the urine cup over, the lid wasn't fastened tight, and urine was all over his desk. Files, court documents, all saturated with urine. Oh, I do. Our first inclination is, oh my God, I should go in and help him, but then I'm like, yeah, no, I'm not going in helping him clean up urine on his desk. So, I, what would most of us do, everyone except for Jim, what would we do? I would probably put rubber gloves on up to my elbows, call maintenance, start throwing things away, you know, just fumigate my office. I probably would get rid of my desk and try and get a new one. If the county want to provide a new desk, I'd probably go out and buy my own. Not Jim. Jim's the exception to the norm. He got like napkins, those paper towels that you unwind, and just started blotting them on his desk. And within five minutes, it's like, like if you or I like would spill a bottle of water to clean up water on your desk, that's how Jim was cleaning up the urine. Within five minutes, everything was back to normal, he was just back working like nothing happened. So, normally I know people have an opportunity when they come up to receive their pen to, um, speak, but I don't think commissioners that we want to give Jim that opportunity. For a couple of reasons. Some of you may or may not know that Jim has a fake tooth. It's true. So, you know, one reason is we do not want, you never know what's going to come out of his mouth, and plus, a lot of times when he gets talking, he gets really excited and his tooth comes flying out. And I would not want to subject the people in the front row to Jim's tooth flying out onto their lap. Yeah. So Jim, you and I have been in the office the longest, uh, 30 years for the county, I have 27 in. We've been working together since 1998, we've shared a lot of great times together, now I've become a coworker of mine, but a great personal friend. We both officiate wrestling together and share that bond as well. Rumor is that you may retire next year. Maybe, I'll have to talk to the commissioners, we'll let you talk as long as you promise to glue your tooth in very well, because yes, he does glue his tooth into his mouth at times. If anybody ever needs to find Jim or wants to talk to him, he, you can always find him in his office between the hours of 4:30 and 5:00, listening to his favorite song, Sound of Silence by Disturbed, over and over. It's like, how many times can you listen to this song in a half hour? Well, yeah. So, good luck, congratulations, well not good luck, but congratulations.
Thanks brother, I appreciate it. That was a good roast.
So Jim, I remember when you lost your tooth. How much fun Ed and I had. Anyone who's seen the Mad Magazine with the cover, the guy doesn't have a tooth? We got him a cover of that, we went out and bought him a box of Chiclets, so he could use one of the Chiclets to put up in his tooth. And we had fun with you that time. She couldn't get it filled in for, what, I think, a week?
Yeah, it was over a week. Matter of fact, Peretta was, um, in our basic filings when I was walking around waiting for that and when I first got it, he was part of it.
We tried to get ahold of Dennis to postpone longer because you were kind of quiet that week. But they, they went ahead and scheduled it anyway, but, all joking aside, I worked with you many, many years. Thing about Jim is, is safety first. I mean, he preaches that all the time and he wants to make sure that each one of the members of probation office go home to their families at night. So his training, he says you always fall back on your training. And, uh, as he's trained many people in many, many different parts of life with the teachers and, yeah, I was training with probation staff, um, that's been a major, a major asset for the county and thank you for that. Another thing I've noticed is, is the clients that have thanked him. They joke around about him with his wardrobe, having the same pants that he had 30 years ago, the same tie, I think he still had that Miami Vice tie that he used to wear.
No, I actually, I took its turn in the dryer one time, I lost that.
The clients, they joke with you about that, which shows that they can joke with you, but at the same time, they know that you helped them and there's that line drawn between a probation officer and a member of the community that you assisted. And they can still call your friends, uh, someone who reached out, after any time of need. You know, I've seen many clients thank you over the years for, for getting them on the right track and having them become protective members of society, so, um, I think that's more rewarding than anything, and I think you would agree with that. But I want to thank you for your years of service, you've been a great asset for the county, you're a friend, we appreciate it that you did.
You know, Jim, I didn't get to know you well, but I, I don't know what's harder for you, uh, working with these guys over there, it's a relief to go and work with the clients, right?
Sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, you certainly have managed to keep a youthful look and, and I've seen you around a lot and I'm always amazed now to hear that you've been here 30 years, I never knew that. But certainly, um, to put 17 or 18 years into working with people with, uh, with addiction issues takes a special kind of person and, uh, to do it and as Commissioner Metzger said, to have people's respect at the same time is, is something that you certainly can be proud of and that we certainly, uh, really feel thankful for. So thank you for the 30 years and if they give you a hard time, just tell us, we'll go over and say, "Amen."
We always said that when you came to work for probation, you had that broad shoulders and being able to take a good ribbon.
Got a thick skin, it's part of the stress release.
And I'll yield my time for another story, anybody have another story?
We don't have that much time.
They don't line up.
There was one that I still marvel at, it was the flood of 96. And, uh, and Jim went up to check on his property on Route 87 and he saw the water coming up through the yard, and, uh, so he decided to, to put on a, his hip waders and he went out in the yard and, uh, I don't know what you're thinking, but he got two cinder blocks.
The current, I needed to wait to get across the current.
He told these two cinder blocks.
Cinder blocks.
He thinks that's going to stop him from the water. Well, and then, next thing he knows, he finds up, you know, this is January, he finds himself in the stream, hanging on to a branch, one of the zip waders I think you're still looking for down on the.
Yeah, that Stevie Colick loaned down to me.
Yeah.
Or Donnie Colick, I'm sorry.
Thank God that the person stopped on the bridge to check the, the water gauge and heard you yelling, or you probably would've froze to death.
Yeah, I was trying to look for another way to get to 87, because that, that gully was filled with water and he was down there just standing and saw me and he got his attention and another car passed and, long story short, uh, God blessed me that day.
Yeah.
God blessed me. I didn't even feel a cold until after they said that rut helps coming, then it did, then you start shivering and, yeah.
If you need Jim's assistance during a flood, don't ask. Just stay home.
I was, I was left guard.
Jim, it sounds like you're a fighter.
Yeah.
And you're not going to be deterred by a flood or by people with problems that you're going to get the job done.
Yeah.
And we appreciate that.
Thanks. Thank you, Jim. We have a pin for you here and we need to get a picture with you.
When we get this photo, is it okay if I get a second one with my brothers and sisters that came over?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
APO, Cory, Lo, someone, you up here too? Please. Yeah, you guys can, yeah, that's fine.
Oh, here, let me turn this way so we have it's right.
No holding hands? Alright. Alright, I got everybody. One, two, three. Got it.
Okay, up next, uh, public safety, Wendy Hastings, another 30-year-old.
Rose Dirk.
Yeah? Yeah? It's fine.
Good morning, everyone, so we have a unique opportunity here this morning, not only are we celebrating Wendy's 30-year service pin, um, we're celebrating her retirement today. Tomorrow, she will retire from the county after having these 30 years, so we're going to wrap this together.
Woo!
So Wendy came to the county in, uh, 1992, July 1992, after attending the Sweetbrier College and the Williamsport Hospital Paramedic Training, where I was fortunate also to become a paramedic there. She actually started as the EMS field coordinator inspecting ambulances, back when it was still the Department of Emergency Services in the cramped basement of the courthouse. It's probably very few may remember that situation now. Fortunately, in 1994, we moved out to the Lysoc complex and was afforded much nicer offices and more room. In October of 2001, Wendy was then promoted to the EMS Program Manager Director and took over the, the reins of the EMS council. While she's been in that part, uh, in that employment, she's been responsible for managing both the EMS council, which those who don't know is, for EMS services in the state, it's all broken into regional councils, and here, the commissioners have the contract provided for Lycoming, Toga, and Sullivan. So we oversee those three counties, uh, and each, we have a regional council as well as each county council, as well as we have the council staff that works in the office. So, um, it's not just managing a couple people in the office, it's, it's after-hours meetings, it's elected officials to those councils, um, so it's very, very involved and staying in contact with the Department of Health and EMS regulations. Uh, she provided oversight to the Department of Health EMSOF grant process, which is, um, basically, uh, when you get a speeding ticket, there's the EMSOF field there, and we got a speeding ticket, come on, I know you have. Um, and then that, that is how, um, the EMS councils are funded, through that, through that fund, so, and then it's, it's internal grant process and comes down to our providers, so, uh, she's been in, uh, in charge of overseeing that. Uh, she chaired the North Central Task Force Healthcare Coalition, uh, in our, it was seven counties, it's now 10 counties, so for a while she was the chair of the healthcare coalition for the, for the task force. Managed the Narcan distribution for the region, as part of substance abuse, the, the council was selected as being the distribution point for all agencies, it's not, not just for EMS, um, she provides to the sheriff's office, um, the probation, basically anybody involved, West Branch Drug and Alcohol, anybody involved in, in distributing, distributing, excuse me, Narcan, Wendy was the point of contact through the council. She acts as a PIO for Emergency Operations Center. We're fortunate, um, in our department, because we have our EMA division and we have the EMS council, in, in areas of disaster, we're able to flex everybody around and EMS does come over and help EMA, so one of Wendy's responsibilities was, uh, she acted as a PIO and actually I think that's one of the things she enjoyed, um, was being able to speak as the face of, of the EOC. Helped navigate the COVID crisis, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about COVID. Uh, once again, we were fortunate because we had our Department of Health arm next to our EMA arm, which a lot of counties don't have that benefit. In other counties, the EMS council is just a, an organization that's not really attached to their county, so there was a lot of broken information here, we had EMA on one side of the hallway and EMS on the other side of the hallway, so we were very fortunate, we were getting information from both arms of government, um, so Wendy helped navigate that. And the one thing I do want to recognize her for was, she was instrumental in, in getting some decontamination equipment for the ambulances, basically, uh, fluid in these sprayer boxes that people were able to go out and actually we were able to spray in the ambulances and stuff, um, so that was one of the small projects during COVID she was responsible for. Assisted numerous EMS providers and services with questions, I mean, I couldn't even tell you how many times, after-hours call, I mean, we all, you know, I mean, I'm a paramedic, lots of EMTs, people have the habit of waiting till the last minute to fix their certification, ambulance inspections, ambulance licenses, you know, human nature, people wait till the last minute. I've always taken calls at home, calls after hours, frequently she's in the office after hours, I was just like, I had this person call me late. So just helped numerous providers with their, with their credentialing and getting their stuff. So that's, in, as part of that, she's always been an advocate for our EMS providers, um, over 30 years. That's one thing we always, always said, she's been an advocate for our providers, for our services, for our rural EMS, she recognizes that we're not Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, Harrisburg, Scranton, um, we're very unique here and has that, you know, has went to our legislators with, with stuff that we need to see changed, um, you know, and been successful in those areas. So, uh, Wendy, congratulations on your retirement, your successful 30 years, um, I know you're going to miss her on the office, so, um, but I'm happy that you're going to be, continue busy with Jeffrey and your, uh, she's very active in her community in Eaglesmere, uh, she's always got something going up there, I, I'm actually envious, Eaglesmere appears to be a very beautiful community. I mean, I visit stuff and always been from here, but it's like she's always got something going on up there. And, uh, she's going to remain as the Sullivan County Coroner, another hat she wears, so, um, so we'll still be in contact with her and she's still going to be active and everything, but congratulations on your successful years and, uh, we wish you well, so.
Yeah, well Wendy, um, I know when we were, you know, I was a new commissioner and trying to learn all the departments and whatnot, and then attending so many meetings and, from Harrisburg all across the state, our EMS, um, and we'd hear a lot of stories, but I could always count on you to tell me the rest of the story. And, you know, it is, it's, it's amazing, uh, the complexities of, of that department, uh, not only locally, but throughout the state and probably throughout the nation. But there's one thing that always impressed me, and, and when I would, uh, go up to visit John Yenling, I'd look at his office, say, "Oh my God, there's so much information buried in all these books." And I went down to your office and although yours was a smaller office, you know that these people were always trying to stay on the cutting edge of what you did. And, um, because you wouldn't have that much information in front of you if you weren't. So, I appreciated the dedication, uh, and the counsel that you've given us as commissioners and, uh, you will be missed, uh, and hopefully we get to see you, you know, in the future as well, so, good luck.
You know Wendy, I, I echo that as a, as a new commissioner seven years ago, uh, it was really wonderful the way you helped to try to help us understand, uh, the world of EMS, which is a world that the public tends to take for granted, that, that they're going to call 911 and someone's going to show up there who's a trained EMT who's going to save them. And, uh, the public should understand that behind that action, there's a lot of people like Wendy, 30 years dedication, knowing the system and knowing how things have changed and, and look at the challenges in your 30 years with the declining role of EMTs and the distribution of Narcan, I mean, just think of the, right, the challenges we have with OD, people ODing and so forth, so I do thank you for that and I thank, on behalf of the people in this county, I thank you for giving 30 years to caring about them and knowing that it, it's not going to be taken for granted, that someone is behind it. You know, the, uh, the whole world of being a coroner, uh, is a whole nother challenging world, so we wish you well in retirement and, uh, know that you've been appreciated and that, uh, we hope you will enjoy yourself. You're welcome.
Thank you so much for your service, it's, uh, 30 years, just a generation and a half of your life that you've given in people this county, and you've done it with professionalism and, uh, you're sorely going to be missed by, by your staff, by the county, and I thank you. Did you say anything?
Sure.
Can you step over to the microphone just a little, the livestream? Thank you.
My, my entire professional career has been with the Lycoming County Department of Public Safety. And in 30 years, we have together battled tornadoes and hurricanes and floods and global pandemics, um, and I have had an opportunity to work with some of the best coworkers and EMS providers anywhere, so I'm very grateful for that opportunity.
I was one of the ones that was here when they did have the 911 in the basement of the courthouse, which always amazed me, I'm thinking, if that levy gives away, we have the 911 services in, in a basement which is going to flood first. So, I'm thinking, thank God they did get, uh, the wisdom to move it and then they moved it to a good facility out where it's not going to flood and.
Wendy got a bunch bigger office?
Yeah.
I did.
Come on, they had the life.
Alright, one, two, three. Say one, yeah.
No, the whole DTS, I think, I think she'd love to have, she'd love to have a photo as a memory. She just described her as wonderful coworkers.
I need to hide somewhere. Alright, I'm going to take two because I have two phones, one, two, three. One, two, three. Is she really here?
Is she really here? Thank you.
Where are you, Mike? Yeah.
Get up here, Keely. She's kind of bashful. But it's a pleasure having Keely in our office. We can't take credit for much of that 10 years, about a tenth of it, or, yeah. She's been here in Veterans Affairs. She spent most of her time working in court administration where she's an asset there as she is everywhere. You can't walk in our office without seeing a smile. And she handles a variety of veterans and spouses and families. You can't find a more empathetic person, caring, and that smile comes across on the phone every time. So it's a real pleasure working with Keely and I hope that she stays around here and gets one of those 30-year things too. So we're grateful to have her. Thank you, Keely.
So I rode down in the elevator with Keely and Mike and I said, 10 years. I saw your name on this and I'm like, where'd that 10 years go? But Keely is a woman of her faith.
Absolutely.
And she is the fruits, she lives the fruits of that faith every day. She is one of the sweetest, kindest, most helpful people you will ever meet in your lifetime. And I've seen that day in and day out for the years I've known you. And thank you so much for your service.
And she and her sister are bakers extraordinary. We put on five pounds since she's come in the office.
And Keely, I haven't worked with you, but obviously you have been described as the sweetest, most also be one of the most competent and smartest people to be nine years in court administration and to do that job and then to come over here and do what needs to be done. So we thank you for that kind of dedication, for that kind of application of your skills and for your 10 years you've been with us.
I'd just like to add that, you know, our Veterans Affairs Department is one of the elite in the state. It's amazing that people, you know, when they're lost, they come here from different areas. It's not just Lycoming County. And they tell us, well, we're here because we know that Lycoming County provides the best service for its veterans in the state. You think about that because it's such a small county. But the work that you do, that everyone in your department does is phenomenal. And, you know, when you take a look at the money that you bring back to those people, not only do they need it, but they also spend that money in our communities. And it makes a difference and you are all making a difference. So I want to thank you for your service and I agree. I hope, well, I'm not going to be here to give you a 30-year, but I hope you stay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And you're allowed to say something as well.
Okay, just thank you guys very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, one, two, three.
You know, we tell the community through, you know, meetings like this, what county does for you and what nonprofits do and who they are. And being here, this is my 11th year, what is amazing is the dedication that the, I'm going to tell you, 99.9% of the county employees give to their constituents. And when you go into the offices and you see what they're doing behind the scenes and you know the importance, what do they mean? How are they providing those services? I can say in certain departments throughout the state, it's not the same. But in Lycoming County, they work, they work hard, they have meaning and purpose. And we can't, we can't have enough of these awards to give our people.
I'm going to skip 2.2 since we already did that in conjunction with Wendy's 30-year. Moving on to reports, 3.1, 3.2, Jessica.
Good morning, Commissioners. This might be my favorite day when we do those presentations. We were just talking, maybe we can start having more of them for some other things, but it's really certainly just a breath of fresh air and makes me realize what we're, the bigger purpose and why we're all here, so.
All good.
The Personnel Actions Report I provided for June, I apologize, it's a little bit later than I like it to be, but I have them all listed here for you. So for the month of June, we hired a corrections officer, an administrative specialist for the procurement department, a few clerk positions, one in the MDJ office, one in planning and assessment, two more corrections officers there for the prison, custodial workers, domestic relations officer, a driver for PRC, a few special detectives for the DUI center, EMS regional field coordinator, equipment fueler, three equipment operators for RMS, maintenance, electrical for facilities, probation officer for juvenile probation, two resident supervisors for PRC, two telecommuter communicator trainees for DPS and PRC work crew foreman.
And all of these are replacements except for the part-time clerk at the PCT and the RMS position with the equipment operator. Right, as I go down there, I see there are open.
That's correct.
So how many, how many positions do we have open now? That you know, do you know of?
I don't know off the top of my head.
But we must be down from the 50 we were at.
We're doing really well, yes. I could bring a report of sort of our recruitment update to this meeting if you would like me to do that.
You can do that.
Okay, yeah, I will, I will. We have some good metrics in the new system that I can share.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have a motion to approve the personal action.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Call in favor, Sade.
Hi.
So carry. I have a motion to approve the TDA report.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Call in favor, Sade.
Hi.
So carry. Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, you're welcome.
3.3, county's payable cash report, Frank.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present for your ratification. The invoices due through July 20th, 2022, that were paid yesterday, July 13th, 2022, in the amount of $2,869,963.19. Of that approximately 42%, or $1,204,653.98, were funded by the county's general fund. $1,45,844.49, or approximately 35 and, or 36.5% were funded by grants and other sources. $618,354.72, or approximately 21.5% were funded by RMS and their profits, and $110 was escrow funds.
Okay. Motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions? Call in favor, Sade.
Hi.
So carry, thank you.
Thank you.
We will recess and adjourn this time for Lycoming County zoning and for its amendment to the public committee.
Morning, Mark.
Morning, Commissioners. We're bringing an amendment to the county zoning ordinance to this public hearing, it's Amendment 2022-02. And this will be regulating primary solar energy systems. These are the large systems that generate energy for the electrical grid. These will be permitted by right in the agricultural districts. They'll be permitted by special exceptions in the resource protection, countryside and suburban mixed districts. They will not be permitted in the rural centers, estates and suburban estates, as well as the regional commercial, industrial and neighborhood preservation districts. We've addressed issues such as reflective layer mitigation, the decommissioning process for the facilities once they cease producing electricity. The facilities will be fenced in for security and accommodations have been put in to maintain the appearance of these facilities and the fencing. At this time, we'd like to ask for any public comment or questions.
Can you explain to the public, so I'm out there and I'm watching this, or I pick up the paper tomorrow and it says that there's, you're not allowed to have solar in certain areas. And they say, oh my gosh, I wanted to put solar in my residential. This applies specifically to prime, principal solar energy systems, right? So distinguish for the public the difference between that and the person wanting to put solar on their property.
The people that want to put solar energies on their property for their house, for their barn for personal use is much different than this case. This is a case where solar facilities will be built in large-scale amounts to generate electricity to provide back into the electrical grid, okay? Where the accessory solar energy systems are designed to provide energy for that particular house or property.
And they may still go back to the grid if there's excess generated, but it's not the primary purpose of the, is that what you're explaining?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I know there is going to be a lot of, I've already gotten some calls from people about ordinances that other municipalities that are not part of the county zoning are putting into effect about the solar. So this is not going to prohibit people from using solar energy or putting up solar panels for their use in their personal use and so forth?
No, this is to regulate the companies that are coming in to put up the primary solar facilities, commonly known as solar farms.
Right. And what, describe the acreage or the span of these solar farms that come in.
They can, they can be quite large. One of the things that we included in the amendment is if you wanted to put one into a resource protection area, which is basically woods, forestry land, things like that, we relegated that if you have to take in excess of one acre, okay, and that would require removal of 20% of mature trees, that it wouldn't be allowed, thereby protecting the, protecting the resource protection areas. Another thing is they're not going to be allowed on slopes in excess of 15%. To do that, to take that many trees and vegetation off of that degree of slope of a mountain, would increase the chance for problems with erosion and sedimentation control, which is vital to our waterways that all basically flow into the Chesapeake Bay.
Right. And also when the erosion occurs, we're more prone to flooding and other problems, right?
That's correct.
Yeah?
Are there many proposed solar farms here in Lycoming County?
Not many as of yet. There are, I believe, two, maybe three that were proposed. One was in Woodward Township that's outside of our jurisdiction. Another is over in the, I believe, Nippenos Township, okay? Again, outside of our jurisdiction. A lot of it has been put on hold as we were creating this ordinance. And now that we have this in place, developers can come in and propose a development order.
How much agricultural land do you think will be used for some of these?
That's hard to say. One of the things that we did in the agricultural land, it can only be located on 50% of the Class 1, 2 and 3 agricultural soils, okay? Or in the case of facilities that incorporate what's called agricultural takes, okay, which allows for the panels to be put on agricultural lands, but still use those lands for farming and agricultural purposes, such as livestock grazing, things like that.
Another question is, what's the maintenance cost for these facilities? There's going to be.
The biggest maintenance costs that they're going to have are just general maintenance to the panels that move with the site, okay? They're moving parts, they require lubrication, inspection and cleaning. Another one of the maintenance features of this ordinance is that for the security fences, okay, is that they have to maybe maintain to restrict uncontrolled weed growth and things like that.
So with these solar farms, are they able to store electricity or does it just have to be used as it's being produced?
They get put right into the grid. They do store a minor amount, okay? But most of the primary facilities that we've seen are not set up to store facilities. They're set up to produce and provide it to the grid.
Right. So we got into areas of low solar output. How effective will they be?
They are more effective than they were. Technology has increased on that end, but that also brings us to another thing on the, as far as decommissioning. If a solar facility does not generate electricity for a period of 12 continuous months, it's considered inactive and will be subject to decommissioning.
Okay, so then if it gets decommissioned, does that mean it's going to be dismantled then?
Dismantled and the entire site will be returned to the original condition before it was developed.
So, I guess so. I had another question that's kind of escaped me at the moment. Oh, so is this, are these going to be used to supplement what we currently use or is it going to try to replace what we're using?
At this point, it's going to supplement what we use.
Well, I would hope in the ordinance it won't be allowed to try to replace it, replace anything unless, until that technology is really reliable, because we know it's not.
Right. And a lot of that is going to be determined by the actual market as far as what we'll be generating and if these can.
Right. I guess what I'm kind of getting at is we, I don't want to see it pushed on us where we have an option, I use this, but you don't have this because. we have an option, I use this, but you don't have this because, because of what's going on with our, these people in control, or you just put it bluntly, the idols in Washington destroying our ability to produce our own energy and it's, it's for no good reason at all, you know? Our fossil fuels are not destroying this planet and carbon dioxide is not.
Right. And this doesn't address that. This tries to address and control the construction of these facilities, construction and operation of these facilities.
All right, got your question. All right. All right, well, it's a lot of things to consider, I guess, but...
And to that end, we also received input from Tom Murphy. He is the director of the Marcellus Center of Penn State University as well as LeCombe County Planning Commission and other input. We had a lot of input from them as well as the public on this.
Can I ask you, is this a balanced ordinance? For example, is the twelve months and the decommissioning, is that standard among ordinances or is that on the short side or on the long side in, in your opinion?
In my opinion, it's, it's an effective time length, okay? Because again, with, with the facilities, when they aren't generating electricity, they're taking up land that could be used for other things.
Right. And is that, is that time period in most? I haven't, I haven't surveyed under...
Yes, it is.
It is?
Generally, it's twelve to eighteen months.
Twelve to eighteen months, okay. And I see that they have eighteen months. So for the public to understand, without an ordinance under the rules of zoning, you can put this anywhere, right?
Correct.
If there is no zoned use for it, then it can go anywhere. And the point of the ordinance is not to weigh in on whether or not it's good or bad to have solar panels, it's to say, listen, solar energy should be in this area of the county or that area of the county so that we don't wind up with a, a use of land that's not, that's not good or that's destructive. So that's, that's the purpose of the ordinance?
Yes.
Why would, why would a farm be decommissioned?
If it doesn't produce electricity.
Why wouldn't it?
Many reasons. Whether it's producing it and not providing it to the grid, okay? Because again, the panels will work. They just sit there so they're going to absorb energy and they're going to work. But if it's not transmitted into the grid, that's one reason why it would. If there were things wrong with the actual maintenance and mechanics of it and it wasn't addressed for twelve months, that's another reason.
You know, we, we've talked several times, you know, because, you know, whether we like it or not, we're in competition with other counties for employment for a number of reasons. And to be able to set up a solar farm for an industrial park that the taxpayers could, could help fund initially and bring in cheap energy, cheap labor. When you look at some of the, when you look at some of the cost in energy, Harrisburg, for example, there are many, many huge manufacturing facilities down there and their, and their energy costs are like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a month. You have some that are going in a quarter of a million a month. And to be able to look at a farm like that and, and tie it into economic development for our community, you know, is something that we, we've talked about. We've not really seriously explored it, but, but it's something that maybe we should because we are starting to develop other, other corridors for industrial parks.
Yeah, the reason I asked that question is precisely what Commissioner Myster is talking about. I don't think we want to weigh in on helping or hindering, but we certainly don't want to not have the ability to get alternative sources of energy and jobs into the community because if we reduce the cost of energy, manufacturers will come here. I think that's what the commissioner is saying, that they will come here. So, you know, it's interesting to me that they have twelve months or they can be decommissioned. We've watched natural gas wells sit with nothing done on a lease for seven years, ten years, and no one is telling them they have to cap that well or do anything with it. So I just want to make sure that we're not doing some, I know there's a lot of pressure in this state to be supporting the natural gas industry and solar is competition for it, let's face it, right? Solar energy is competition, it's all energy. But our, I, I believe our job as elected officials is not to, to tip the scales of justice one way or the other, but just to make sure that the playing field is level for everybody so that ultimately our taxpayers are benefited by having jobs created and by having, you know, less expensive energy. So I just, so, but you tell me that is norm. So, and I'm looking at the director there and she's telling me it is, so...
You don't want a facility sitting vacant utilizing land and not have that ability to regulate the removal. It gives them an incentive to either fix it or get rid of it.
Right.
We, we end up in, say, Pennsylvania with a lot of towers that were abandoned, you know, just like old gas wells, old towers, things because there was no removal requirements.
Right. Old coal mines that were not, right. No, absolutely, and I'm glad we've learned and we're not making that mistake again.
So with, with the panels and stuff, is there, I guess you really don't know, most of those are going to be made in China, do you know, or is that, we have any...
We can't regulate that.
Yeah, right. But I encourage these companies if they are coming in to use as much American products as you can, you know, this is a general statement.
One of the things that we included in this is then when it is decommissioned, materials shall be resold or salvaged, okay? Those that cannot be resold or salvaged will be disposed of in a facility authorized to dispose of such materials, okay? They won't just be buried into a general landfill, what have you. They'll try at the very, at the very least to dispose of them properly the way they should.
Another idea since we're on topic of energy, we do have, Westinghouse has developed these micro nuclear plants, you know, big enough to take, small enough to take care of a city and they're, it's very efficient energy, you know, trying to rein them, you know, this. It's another thing that I think really should be really considered. Nuclear is probably the safest energy we have, you know, and it's just been advanced a lot more than since like Three Mile Island, which hurt no one, you know, that was because we had safety standards. I think that's something else we should really look at.
Any other questions? Can you hear any? Move during the meeting at this time and we'll be, Commissioners' public meeting. Move on to action items.
Five point one, vote to approve the solar facilities amendment ordinance.
Same motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So, Harry, thank you.
Thanks, everyone who put a lot of time and energy into...
Absolutely.
Wendy, even though you're retiring tomorrow, I've still got one action item for you today.
I'm going to cast the torch to Carla.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is my first ever huge speaking, so I apologize to all of you that are still here.
I am looking for the approval of, it's the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three contract. It's our annual contract through the LTS EMS Council, LeCombe County and Department of Health. This year it's a little bit higher because there are new funds for the rural communities, education, looking for better education, scholarships possibly. And that amount, it is twenty-nine thousand, five seventy-eight, seventy-five more than last year's contract.
I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Any questions for Carla? Can you hear any? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Harry, thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we won't promise you it will always be that easy.
I know, I know.
Okay, five point three. Commissioners, I'm seeking your approval on a letter of intent with Pennsylvania College of Technology. This letter of intent is for the purchase of two properties, twenty-twenty-two budgeted funds are available.
Make that a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I will second.
Any questions or discussion?
No, this is a, this is a great opportunity for us and I see the director of RMS in the audience, Mr. Yorks, and I don't know whether he wants, he might have to come up and explain what, what's going to happen with that one property. Shannon Rossman is here, she can explain what's going to happen with the other property.
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't think I get to say this, it's my first time here though.
Okay, maybe not.
As far as the one piece of property, it is what the locals, we would call the old Fagnano car lot area, that's the paved area beside, would be east of the Third Street Transfer Station. So we are looking forward to having an opportunity to open up that area, separate the commercial haulers from the general public that bring waste in at the Third Street Transfer Station. So it would be a huge opportunity. The biggest thing is be providing a, a safe separation between the two parties, so, and also provide other recycling opportunities that we, we just don't currently have a footprint for, so...
I'd like to thank Penn College. They, they are instrumental and they are our partners in this community in a number of ways. And, you know, addressing some of the needs that we had around that facility and to be able to open it up and say, okay, you know, we would talk about, you know, transferring that land over to RMS. And as we move further and further into the future, you know, how, how do we dispose of waste and recycle? That's gonna, that's a, that's a big key. That's a big question as well. So having that land next to the, to the transfer station is, is huge for the future of our, our transfer station and RMS.
Especially in light of the changes you want to make to the transfer station to deal with outdated equipment and everyone knows when you go down Third Street, you see that line of cars. We hopefully are going to eliminate that, that is a safety...
That's one of the big focus.
Right.
Safety hazard.
That's a safety hazard. So, yeah, I concur with you, Commissioners. This is, we do thank Penn College for working with us on this.
Again, this is a letter of intent.
Right.
I think it's important to note that there's actually two parcels that are identified in this letter of intent and the second parcel is land that we intend to swap, for lack of a better term, with property at the golf course because that's tied up with federal funding from the PAC.
That one's tied to the...
The NCR.
The NCR, which goes back to nineteen-seventy-eight, which is the agreement where they borrowed, where they took twenty thousand dollars of federal, federal monies and it was, and the deed is tied to structures, doesn't say what it is. It was tied to the entire four hundred and fifty acres of the golf course.
It federalized the whole property.
Yeah, federalized the whole property.
And that's what, that's what happens if you have a property that you, even if it's only for like a portion of the property that you accept federal funds that were funneled down through DCNR, it may only go into a building or may only go into an improvement on one part of the parcel, but it takes the whole parcel, no matter what size, and federalizes it. So in order to, to hopefully be able to have some additional residential growth in that area, we need to convert. We're right now waiting for the final appraisal for the White Deer Golf Course properties that we're talking about. It's, I believe, the old, it's what they tried to do disc golf on.
Par three.
Par three, which is not being used currently. The rest of the golf course is doing very well, it's being managed really well, but the old par three is not being utilized and really doesn't have any use for the golf course itself. Would be great for some additional housing in the area. We're looking to acquire the Penn College parcel that is south of their heavy equipment operator training area that's along the river, off of First Station Road, would be a great natural area, boating, park, you know? We would hope to eventually, we have in a plan that we would like to have the Sesskana Greenway Trail System going through that park, property along the old rail line. So there's a lot of potential. We are bound by the federal requirements though and we have our federal liaison working on this. The National Park Service has to approve it. So it has to be a proper conversion. We also have to, they will also be reviewing all of the titles and deeds and make sure that everything is allowed.
And the conversion has to be for recreation?
It has, yes. We, it's, it's not an acre for acre, dollar for dollar, but it has to be a viable recreational facility that, that then will be, that will become federalized in place of what we are able to de-federalize off of the White Deer property.
And is there a timeframe where the, the federal agencies...
That's why we have our liaison down in DC working for us because it is obviously not a high priority for the National Park Service to review conversions.
Now, I would say that this is a lesson for all municipalities and county governments throughout the United States to learn from. We used twenty thousand dollars and they tied up four hundred and fifty, well, about four hundred and fifty acres. And when, when you look at it, and no one knew that.
No.
That, that was the problem.
It was from nineteen-seventy-eight, you know, that board has changed, decommissions, you know, it was originally the Williamsport County Recreation Board, you know, so I don't even know where the documents are for that.
And when you accept just a little bit of money, just a little bit of money, it doesn't matter. You will follow the regulations and your hands will be tied. So I look at that every time we sign a document with, with the federal agencies anymore because...
Hey, I got to ride the water slides.
In, in defense, right? When we, when people elect commissioners and commissioners say we're going to use money for recreation or we're going to use money for bridges, we don't want somebody ten years down the road taking the money that we allocated for something and using it for something else. And so the federal government, when they say we're giving you money for recreation, they don't want local municipalities to turn around and sell it for a profit, right? So I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, but...
An acre and a half or four hundred and fifty acres.
When you become a congressman, when you become a congressman and you tell us that you're, you're, you're appropriating money for one thing, we know that we can believe it's good.
A lot, a lot of times it's, this is a unique circumstance because usually the grants are going towards an, you know, existing park, not such a large parcel. And as we know, we have absolutely no idea what it was used for.
Great. So it says structures, it doesn't say. And you gave us an example, this happened out in Berks County, the ten million dollar building that they did not know until they built the building.
Yeah.
Then turned around and had to go find land and try to do the conversion.
The city forgot, the city forgot that they, they took funds and the Nature Conservancy, Berks County Nature Conservancy, they built their facility, which is to me part of the park system because they recreated a whole park system and, but the National Park Service didn't look at it like that, so...
But the good news is that that land next to the, next to the transfer station will be purchased with RMS funds, I'm sure, right? So we won't be using taxpayer, but here's...
Had to get that in.
Had to get that in, I wanted the public to understand. But here's, here's another important, paint a picture for yourself, right? Why are we going through all this trouble? Because if we can build housing on that land from the golf course, the three of us are committed to trying to sell it, if we can get houses built, people move in, what does that do? It spreads the tax burden over more properties, right? And it spreads the burden and paint a picture of people wanting to come here. This past weekend I was in Watson Town, there's a mountain biking, my son is involved in and they, and I met a gentleman there who moved to the area from outside the area and I said to him, what brought you here? And he said, I love the outdoors and it's right in your face and I don't have to drive for hours. I don't have to drive for hours. I'm not in Los Angeles, I'm not in New York and that's an asset we have and we need to capitalize on it. So that recreation part you were talking about... So, that recreation part you were talking about of getting access to the river, market houses where people can actually walk on outdoor trails nearby.
Well, not there.
Not there, but within a couple of miles, right?
But it is a very centralized facility, and with the access to the river, anywhere we have public access to the river, in some way, shape, or form, it's going to get used.
Yes.
And, and anywhere we have a trail system, we've seen it, you know, anywhere we have a trail system, it's going to get used.
And we need to grow the population.
We're just praying that the, because this is kind of like, we're not buying them together, but it is kind of a joint deal, because Penn College, you know, is, is interested in getting rid of some of the parcels that they don't need, but they don't have to get rid of them. We're just praying that the National Park Service approves us. They're somewhat difficult to deal with, right?
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Thank you both.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any additional questions? Green, Al, Bear's side.
Hi.
Hi. 5.4 and 5.5, Jason.
Commissioners, for your approval, 5.4 is the approval of purchase from Security Fence Company in the amount of $16,300. This is the large gate, aluminum gate, that opens and closes, and so lets our, at the transfer station, and allow our trucks, once they're full or empty, to go through back and forth, out onto Third Street. The aluminum framework has given 20 years of its best life, the track system is shot, and the door opener system is obsolete. So, this falls under our 2022 budget and sense of maintenance and repair, we set money aside every year for maintenance and repair at the transfer station and all our structures. So, this is through CoStar's purchase program, so we're seeking your approval.
I, I guess my question to you is, knowing that we're in the process of purchasing land adjacent to it, would this change any configurations?
Not at this
So, that we would have to, you know, redo it, move it?
Any modifications to that transfer station will be through years of permitting, design work, and in the meantime, I need to have, yeah, we need to have a fence that, a gate system that will work actually right now. So, no, I, I will tell you, it'll be years till we even dig a hole in that facility to modify it, because you, we have budgeting, we have permits, modifications with the Department of Environmental Protection, so it'll be several years till we can actually, small changes we'll be able to do, but the big changes that you're thinking of, traffic patterns and all that, that will be down the road till we can actually make it all happen. But yes, sir, I, we need the fence gate now, so we will use, put it to good use for a couple of years, for sure.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Al, Bear's side.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, the next item, this is the award bid of Phase One closure to R&amp;L Development Company. As we opened bids, I believe, three weeks ago, we had three bidders for the closure project. Basically, it's, we're going to put closure of 22 acres of some of our landfill fields that we've already filled, we're going to install 16 more gas wells, we're going to do quite a bit of new piping, replace a lot of the old stuff in behind our coach implant and the garage area, what we call the upper garage. So, this is going to be a 16-month project. The R&amp;L Development bid was $8,712,312.81. Basically, this was estimated, the project from our engineering company was estimated to be around a $10 million project. The other two bids come in at $12 million, nine and 13 million. So, there was a lot of due diligence put into the R&amp;L Development bid, even R&amp;L's own bond agency wanted to find out to make sure things, they, everything's come up good, Barton Le Judas did quite a bit of background work with R&amp;L to make sure everything was going. R&amp;L's main thing is they're going to be buying the 50 mil liner system that we're going to be putting on over the next year and a half, they're buying it now. Once, once they receive the award to proceed, they would get that material all delivered, once it's delivered, they'll receive payment. So, instead of trying to guess what the liner cost will be from now, for another year and a half, they simply are going to move forward. Their dirt costs and everything are aligned. R&amp;L has been a very good partner at the landfill for several big projects, namely the 1 through 4 field cap, the complete construction of Field 12, most recently, the leachate line that we put from the great township, we call it the great township leachate line, and went down through the Federal Bureau prison ground. So, they have been a very good partner to work with, they know what they're dealing with on our side. So, I'm very happy with the numbers, these funds are all, this, this cost is all funded through our closure funding that we set aside every ton of waste that comes in, so we have that money to use just for these, this project.
Jason, it's expensive to, for closure in a landfill. And why do you have to close it? Why can't you just stop dumping track in there and, and just leave it open?
Well, one of the biggest things is you want to ensure that rain is no longer penetrating the landfill, so you, there's no sense in developing leachate and waste that you've already covered. You can use a couple, there's a product out there, there's a liner system that looks like AstroTurf. The most inexpensive way is to use the dirt, three-footed dirt with the 50 mil liner, but it keeps the leachate out from penetrating, rain penetrating, keeps any gas that the waste is generating in for collection. And that's, it's the standard accepted practice of how you do, become a good neighbor with your, your landfills. Once it's closed, then you know that no waste, no rain, no nothing's getting in, nothing's coming out, your wells are still in place, you're still doing gas collection, but basically, that's going to be there for the rest of eternity.
So, so when you talk about moisture is essential to producing gas, and it sounds like the contrary, you're covering up so that moisture can't get into it, rain.
Yeah, but this is older waste, a lot of this will, your, your gas production is in the first 10, 12 years, you'll receive gas off of waste for roughly 30 years, but here, we've already extracted, the first part of the completionary is Field 6, Field 6 is significantly older, the lower part of Field 11 will still have, the opening, the top will still be open, so the liquid will still be able to penetrate in, because we're still working on the very top of 11, but this is going to be the bottom piece. So, we've gotten the maximum amount of compaction, because we run such good compaction numbers, we run our slopes out the best we can, our settling, our settling that'll settle out over time is pretty much already taken place, so we don't anticipate any massive compaction to come on place from just setting over the years. It's pretty much done moving, so.
Thank you.
It's going to be an exciting project.
Jason, the, the incident we had with the, with the blowout of the liner, the blowout of the cover, does that get reduced by us going through this closure process? Is it a question of weighing, on the one hand, the liability exposure we might have with problems?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. So, in other words, by, by doing this closure, we're reducing the probability that we're going to have further problems like that down the road, which costs a bit of money to fix.
Correct. And you, this is, like I said again, this is the accepted practice, and what, this is what we are permitted and allowed to do. This all has to go through DEP for their vetting, they issue the permit, and this is how then we tell the department, we will close it and ensure that it has, that it won't go anywhere, it won't move, the gas and leachate are taken care of, and it's, it's a guarantee. I mean, basically, you're putting it to rest for good.
And there was a, a design change
Yes.
When we had the failure.
Right.
There was a, a new design, current design that should have probably been used to begin.
Yeah, that But it was a closed part of the
It was.
Oh, it was?
It was.
Okay.
And it was, sir, it was an old design that was used PVC, which is no longer a practice.
Okay, but it already had been closed.
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
And we did get our funds back from that original.
Right, right, I remember that.
Yep. This is, it'll be an exciting project, it's going to be a big project, but I think we're going to be having good partners there with R&amp;L and Barton Le Judas.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Al, Bear's side.
Hi.
So, period.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
And 5.6, Myer, are you on? If not, I'll take it. Okay, Commissioner, seeking your approval for the amendment to the agreement with Avenue Enterprises Solutions, Enterprise Solutions. This is a one-year extension of the register and recorder's contract with Avenue that they provide digital processing, image-to-film, multiplication, film storage and retrieval, archival prints, index verification, index reports for documents that are scanned in and stored.
Of course, we had the register and recorder here maybe six months ago, and he brought over a very old book, which is one of the originals of the records for the county.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Al, Bear's side.
Hi.
So, period.
Commissioner, comment?
I was going to make a quick comment here on this, on the situation with the Controller's office. So, it's important for the public to recognize, this isn't a personality dispute, this isn't about, you know, three Commissioners and Controller, this isn't really a bigger issue, it's about the issue of, what did the General Assembly mean when they divided up the functions between the Controller's office and the Commissioner's office? And so, it isn't a trivial matter, and it isn't one that we enter into an appeal on lightly, but it is one that is of importance to the overall protection, in our view, of taxpayers, and the ability of both offices to do their job properly. You know, literally, for generations, for generations, we were trying to figure out how many years, at least 30 years, the Commissioners always did the payroll, did the accounts receivable, did the general ledger, and the Controller had oversight to make sure that the Commissioners were not spending money. And in fact, a couple of years ago, the Controller's office exercised that oversight on a, on the expenditure on a, on some clothing, that they felt there was no policy stating that it could, could be used, and, and they were correct, the court upheld it. But the point is that there's a separation of functions, that the Commissioners do the work, do the payroll, do the general ledger, do the accounts payable, and the Controller oversees to make sure it's in compliance with county policies and county law. So, it, this had been the practice for literally generations. A couple of years ago, the Controller, she had actually approached me when I first came in, she had approached other ones, we had agreed to move and have that office do all of them, and it just didn't seem to work out, and that's why they were moved back. And so, it isn't that we have some personality thing going on, it isn't about power, it's about, what did the General Assembly mean when they wrote in the statute the division of the duties? Part of the problem is that the General Assembly didn't write the language in a way that is as specific as some might want it to be. And it is true that some counties, although we don't know exactly what other counties do in performing it, there, some counties seem to have both, the office doing both, but there are many, many counties who have it the way we had it for generations, which is that we would do the work and she would, or that office, the Controller's office, would do the oversight. So, it's really a question of, between different elected officials, how we divvy up work. What we believe is that it wouldn't make sense that the General Assembly could not have wanted a division of duties where the fox would be guarding the hen house. And I don't mean that in a pejorative sense, what I mean is that the same elected official would be performing the functions and also doing the oversight of the performance. That's, that's what I mean by that, it's not to degrade any Controller's office, it's to say that that process, in our view, is not what we believe the General Assembly would have wanted. We believe the General Assembly would have wanted us to do the functions, and then an independent entity oversee to make sure that we are doing them in compliance with law and county policy. And that's why we're appealing it. And it's a bigger issue than the three of us and the Controller, we will be gone, but for generations, the, the way these offices function will stay. And so, we, that's, that's why we've chosen to do this. And we hold no animosity towards anybody in this process. It's, it's a process of trying to get to what the General Assembly wanted, and it may be some novel law that's, that is developed.
And, and after reading his report, you know, he, I think he's, you know, he makes a point as far as sending the employees back to fiscal, okay, and the functions, whereas, were they/her employees? And there, there is an argument on their side, that's not what we're arguing, okay, we are not arguing that at all. When you, and it's simple, to have the Controller control all the ledger, and I, I mean, control, that we have no say, we have no input, the books, the ledgers, the accounts payable, okay? And to have auditing, to have the authority to audit, which she does, and then to control the waste, fraud, and abuse, Department of County Government, is, is illogical. I can't imagine if something were to happen, and I'm not saying that it is happening, what I'm saying is in the future, if something were to happen where funds were embezzled, that they'd say, well, who, who are the idiots that allowed this to happen? And by not appealing this to get a better understanding of the intent of the statutes would be irresponsible of us.
I, I think the fact that we did it for 30 years, the way that we are attempting to re-establish it speaks volumes for the fact that that is probably what the General Assembly wanted. And it was a system that we believe worked properly to, to protect the taxpayers.
So, I'll address how I personally look at this. This move was made before I took office, and the reason why I felt it needed to go to court is because the Controller at the time threatened to withhold her signature on the ledger, therefore, the vendors and employees would not be paid. And she felt she had to make that move at the time, so at that time, I approached Commissioner Masara, who was in the office, and our solicitor, so we filed an emergency injunction to make sure that didn't happen. If that threat would have been made to us, I would continue to work with the Controller and would continue to try to work this situation out. There are departments throughout the state that do it both ways. And when we were in court that day, Judge Lee specifically said, this is not a case of whether this is a good Controller or a bad Controller, this is a case of how the law is written, and it's very vague. And he encouraged both sides to produce case law to present their argument, because there wasn't a lot of case law out there. He found in favor of the Controller on the injunction, and he found in favor of the Controller on the overall suit. And it's been brought to our attentions, there's procedural problems with that decision, and those, those concerns have been brought to us. But as I expressed to my colleagues the other day, this is getting very costly. And, and from day one, I didn't care who did the duties, just as long as they were done right. Some parts of the state do it one way, and some parts of the state do it the other way. And there's been problems with both offices getting it done. And that's my main concern, making sure it gets done, making sure that we work together at the end of the day, because we have to, and that's why we're elected, to work together to get the job done. And I know that this case has cost a lot of money, and it's not And it's not my wallet. It's the taxpayer's wallet that's being spent. So personally, I said I don't want to go through an appeal. And my colleagues feel differently, which I respect. And we'll move forward out, see what happens with the courts. I understand my colleagues' point of views, I agree with them in many ways. But I think at some point, you have to say, let's move on, whether you agree with the decision or not. And let's try to resolve this situation going forward so that we can get the work done and get it done properly. We all can come in an agreement without having to back to court. Because we hate back to court, which is going to happen now. The price continues to go up on both sides.
We can still work this out.
And that's what I hope, I hope it gets worked out. I sincerely hope it gets worked out.
On another matter. Now we're coming up to another general election. And we still have Act Seventy-Seven in place. And I spoke with a legislator, two of them, and asked if there was any movement on repealing any part of Act Seventy-Seven. And we all know, we all know that there are some parts of that act that are not good, okay? They're just, they're just not right. And I believe both parties would agree to that. And so I just asked, you know, I'm advocating for a partial repeal. We've done this in the past with the Bigger Waters Act in 2012, where once we understood the devastating consequences of that act, when we saw what that was going to cost, Congress acted quick in a bipartisan way. And they repealed parts of the act. I'm not asking for the whole act to be, you know, repealed. Although I'd like to see that and start over, I highly doubt that that's going to happen with a Democratic governor in there and a Republican legislature. As a matter of fact, I shouldn't even bring the Democrat or Republican legislature because many Republicans like parts of the act, okay? Many people want to have mail-in votes. But that's not just the issue. So we will continue to advocate to have some of it repealed. But as of now, we don't see any movement going in that direction from our State House. Not that they're not talking, it's just something that's not practical at this point in time. If I have anything else.
Tom, please try to keep your comments. A little briefer. Thank you.
Per topic?
Not per topic.
Oh, not per topic. A question on the development, on that five point five. Now, R and L Development, are they going to actually develop, do any developing on that area? Or is it just to close it up on that?
They'll be installing the cap.
Yeah, it's just a liner system. It's, there's, the designs are already approved and everything.
Would that be an area, they could put a solar farm over top of that then, or no?
I, that would be something that we would talk about. We already have an energy system on site.
Yeah.
Typically, they don't like to put too much on. There is probably cases out there where they have them, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's not a bad.
It's an interesting idea. It is an interesting idea because.
It's been entertained, it's just, there's a lot to it. They don't like you putting holes or anything through the liner, you just put in.
And that's why we like public coming to our meetings, because.
Build a platform over top of it.
You don't want to puncture the liner. Yeah, we don't, we don't want to put too much on top of the liner.
Unless they build a platform over top of the liner, you know, from the end to the end. I'm not taking the engineer quite yet. And then, well, the controller, I guess, I just kind of understand, because she has the employees and stuff, but why is she fighting so hard against us? You know, it kind of raises some red flags. But like I said, we might be honest and everything, but, or, but then it would cost the county then to have it outside, audit it, audit that then too. I mean, it's just, I don't know. Hopefully, you can come to some type of agreement or.
The interpretation of the law is written very vaguely.
Yeah, well, I think probably have to go back in time and see what they, see what they're trying to think of. I mean, it's never a good idea, like you said, Fox Garden Hen House, that's just never a good idea. But anyway, this is one of the things I was asked to bring forward. Our national motto is "In God We Trust." And that was, there's a movement across the country since, since 2014, pretty much, I think, is to have that installed on government buildings. And I was just wondering, maybe that could be brought up in maybe next week's meeting, discuss that, possibly having that plaque put on all the county buildings. National motto, it's already been litigated through courts. I mean, you're going to get, probably get, threatened to get sued by these case outfits, but they won't win and they probably won't even take it to court because they know they won't win. And that national motto was birthed here in Pennsylvania. It was pretty neat, it has Pennsylvania history to it. Lincoln, when he was president, this Pollock, who was, he made him the director of the Philadelphia Mint in 1864. And there was a fellow that called him, a pastor from Delaware County, said, you know why we're having so much trouble in our country, so much division? Is because we've turned our back on God, which we're getting away from. And this guy, and Pollock said, you know, you're right. So he thought of this phrase, "In God We Trust." And some of the arguments from the, like, A C L U or whatever say that that's too divisive. And he said, no, that motto was birthed to bring people together. So that's what it came, that's when it came on the coinage, "In God We Trust," and eventually became our motto when, whoops, Eisenhower brought it, you know, our national motto. So it's pretty neat. And this, I forget his first name, Pollock. He was born over Milton, and that's where his grave is. So it's pretty interesting and hopefully, we can get that done in the counties. And there's organizations, people would be willing to donate money towards it. I'm sure we'll have to use any county tax money to do those, put plaques up. Just something to think about.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good day.
Good too.
Anybody else? No, come on, don't lie. Here we go, we've completed our agenda. And our next meeting will be on July the 21st at 10:00 a.m. Everyone have a good week. Thank you.